Every phrase is our melodic green. We're the men of the chorus, we're the men.
We are the men.
We sing parts that often bore us. We're the men.
We are the men.
But tonight we'll sing our own. We're the men of the chorus, we're the men.
We are the men!
But the tables have been turned by the writer of this song. He's giving us a part to sing. He has cleverly designed every note in every rhyme. So every phrase is our melodic green. We're the men of the chorus, we're the men.
We are the men.
We sing parts that often bore us. We're the men.
We are the men.
But tonight we'll sing our own. We're the men of the chorus, we're the men.
We are the men.
We're the men of the chorus. We're the men.
We are the men!
Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful.
(laughing).
Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and Winners. Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Spotsylvania Public Schools entered three entries into Virginia School Board Association Student Art Contest. This contest is held in conjunction with the annual V S B A Regional Spring Network Forums. Each art teacher submitted one piece of artwork from their school. All the art teachers then voted and selected a piece of artwork to represent Spotsylvania in the elementary, middle, and high school contests. We are proud to announce that all of our county winners placed in the regional V S B A art contest. We would like to recognize these Spotsylvania County winners and their teachers. Please come forward with your art teacher as your name is called. Our elementary school winner is Cambrae Walmer. She's a fifth grader at Berkeley Elementary School. Her art teacher is Caitlin LaFaro. Ms. Walmer won third place in the regional V S B A art contest. Our middle school winner is Lauren Fessler. She is a seventh grade student at Post Oak Middle School. Her art teacher is Casey Deal. Ms. Fessler also won third place in the regional V S B A art contest. Our high school winner is Yessenia De La Cruz. She is a senior at Chancellor High School. Her art teacher is Tony Scott. Ms. De La Cruz won first place in the regional V S B A contest. Her artwork will be framed and is currently displayed on a rotation basis at the offices of the State Secretary of Education and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction in Richmond for a year.
Mr. Wolf, if you would continue with 4.02 all the way to 4.06, starting with the All-Virginia event, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brazma. The following students participated in the 2015 All-Virginia Band Event recently. As I call your name, if those individuals could please come forward to be recognized. Riverbend High School, Jonathan Saratelli, horn; Gloria Garner, percussion; and Emma Lighty, violin. Chancellor High School, Noah Karkenny, clarinet; and Benjamin Ransom, trumpet. Cortland High School, Cassie Cosse, euphonium. These students were selected for the prestigious event through a rigorous audition process. They presented a concert with the most talented high school band and orchestra students in Virginia on Saturday, April 11th, at Christopher Newport University. The band directors for these students, if you could please come forward as well to be recognized, are Ryan Adair, Erin Noe, Donald Leonard, and John Zabidall. For 4.03, our Blue Ribbon Schools, congratulations goes out to Spotsylvania High School and its music directors for earning the designation of being a Blue Ribbon School of Music for 2015. Blue Ribbon status is the highest honor for a music department in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This is Spotsylvania High School's third consecutive year earning this distinction. We would like to congratulate Spotsylvania High School Music Directors Joanna Peters Chorus and Brian Jacobs Band and Orchestra. The NASA Langley Research Center and the Virginia Space Grant Consortium announced that Cortland High School student Eliana Jordan was selected to participate in the Virginia Aerospace and Science and Technology Scholars 2015 Program. As a Virginia Aerospace Science and Technology Scholar, she was required to commit to an online learning component of the program, which included eight lesson modules with reading and research assignments, quizzes, simulations, discussion forums, case studies, and a final project. Eliana tackled space problems involving calculus and research at a level well beyond her years. When confronted with materials she had not yet experienced as a 16-year-old, she spent time online self-educating in order to complete her modules and assignments. She successfully completed this program, receiving an A in the course, and will receive two college credits from Thomas Nelson Community College in Hampton, Virginia, while maintaining a full junior course load of advanced and AP courses. She has earned the opportunity to compete to attend an all-expense-paid seven-day residential summer academy at NASA Langley Research Center in Hampton, Virginia, in which she may receive two additional college credits. Congratulations, Eliana. We are proud of your accomplishment. Please come forward. And before she goes, we have an update. We just found out, just now, that she was accepted into the seven-day residential summer academy at NASA. Congratulations. It's all coming in, and selected to be the team leader as well for the team. Our next presentation is the Peace Poster Award. Congratulations to Serena McGowan of Thornburg Middle School. Serena's peace poster came in first place for the Lions Club District 24A. This district includes Spotsylvania, Stafford, Westmoreland, Culpeper, Caroline, Prince William, and Fairfax Counties. Her art teacher is Letitia McMillan. This month, Spotsylvania County Public Schools Administrative Office is showcasing over 100 pieces of outstanding student artwork. Four schools are in this exhibit. These schools are Harrison Road Elementary, our teacher Erin Watson; Livingston Elementary, our teacher Diana Malott; Battlefield Middle School, our teacher Josh Blum; and Chancellor Middle School, our teacher Shannon McKay. These students were recognized at a reception prior to the school board meeting. Students have received certificates of appreciation prior to this meeting. Just a round of applause for them, please. May's Superintendent Award for Outstanding Visual Art goes to Grace Lynn Williams. Grace Lynn is a seventh grade student at Post Oak Middle School, and her art teacher is Pamela Allen. Grace Lynn, will you please come forward along with your teacher to be recognized for this outstanding accomplishment? Nye River. Sorry, everybody, it's Nye River. And before we move on to our next one, I know we have a number of parents who are also here supporting their children tonight in their endeavors and in their accomplishments. If you could please stand and be recognized collectively for these student recognitions this evening.
Congratulations once again to all those that received awards. At this particular time, we're going to take a five-minute break. The time is currently 6:52, so we'd like to be able to start back at 6:57, take a five-minute break, and that way, those that would like to come a little closer for the presentation of the next set of awards for Teacher of the Year, you can make adjustments and do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and Winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest Participants and winners. Mr. Wolf. Thank you very much, men. That was wonderful. Okay, and now on to recognition. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. So we're going to start with item 4.01, recognition of 2015 V S B A Northeastern Region Art Contest. Chancellor Middle School, Courtney Wheeler, sixth-grade teacher since two thousand and seven. When asked about Ms. Wheeler, Principal Cindy Franzen said relationships with students are certainly a strength. Her warm, caring approach allows students to explore learning in a risk-free, comfortable environment. Instruction in her classroom engages students in a way in which math talk and learning conversations are frequently heard. Congratulations, Ms. Wheeler. Courthouse Road Elementary, Corey Rivers, first-grade teacher since two thousand and eleven. Principal Marcy Field writes of Corey, she has spent hours of her time collaborating with other vertical team members to explore data, feedback, and instructional strategies in order to collectively design focused action steps for our school. As Ms. Rivers works with her grade-level team and other members of the faculty, she is committed to supporting that which is in the best interest of students. Congratulations. Portland Elementary, Beth Hoovler, second-grade teacher since two thousand and three, and a Divisional Teacher of the Year finalist. Sherri Steele, Ms. Hoovler's principal, says, "As parents, we all want our children to excel in school, to love learning, and to achieve to high standards. But most of all, we want our children to be loved, to feel special, and to be appreciated for their uniqueness." Beth Hoovler is a teacher who provides the perfect combination of all of these characteristics. Congratulations, Ms. Hoovler. Portland High School, Lisa Depew, Math Teacher since two thousand and two. According to Larry Marks, Mrs. Depew is the type of teacher that I would want my own children to have as their teacher. Students who leave her classroom walk away with a deeper understanding and growing respect for mathematics and critical thinking. Congratulations. One of our finalists comes from Freedom Middle School, Cheryl Gray, Math Teacher since nineteen ninety-six. Principal Alan Jacobs says of Cheryl, she provides a shining beacon, beacon of what an effective math teacher looks like. Students are engaged in learning activities from the time they walk into her room. Her knowledge, skill, drive, and dedication make her a go-go person in our building. Congratulations, Ms. Gray. Harrison Road Elementary, Kara Watt, fourth-grade teacher since two thousand and eight. Debra Frazier writes, Kara Watt is an energetic teacher who has the ability to motivate and focus her students. She loves having the inclusion classes and strives under the challenge of differentiating instruction. Congratulations, Ms. Watts. John J. Wright Educational and Cultural Center, Jan Pharo, Special Education Teacher since nineteen ninety-one. Teresa Gill, Principal at John J. Wright, says that Ms. Pharo inspires her students to excel in every area, creating lessons to challenge and push students to their full potential. Jan's innovative nature motivates her students through a variety of activities that encourage student participation and mastery of individual goals. Again, congratulations, Ms. Pharo. Lee Hill Elementary is not able to join us on this evening, Mari Galindo Sanchez, fifth-grade teacher since two thousand and eleven. When asked about Ms. Galindo Sanchez, Principal Darnella Cunningham stated, "While Mari is an educator who possesses many talents and positive attributes, one adjective which readily comes to mind to describe her is enthusiastic. She constantly celebrates student accomplishments and the success or aha moments she has had while learning with her students." Again, congratulations. Livingston Elementary, Tiffany Breeden, fifth-grade teacher since two thousand and twelve. Principal Terry Kegel says Tiffany is a natural teacher, but she takes that calling a step further by always striving for excellence in all that she does, teaching her students to do the same and reminding all of us to give our best to our students. Congratulations. Massaponix High School, Kathy Lanzarone, ESOL Teacher since two thousand and seven. According to Dr. Joe Pizzani, Mrs. Lanzarone's principal, she sees every student as a gift and the promise of an opportunity to do better and have a better life. She is a teacher who serves as counselor, mentor, teacher, parent, sage, and resources for all things related to school and home. Congratulations. Finalist from Ny River Middle School, Dr. Don Wilcox, sixth-grade teacher since nineteen ninety-four. Principal Varon Davis boasts, "Her classroom environment is student-centered with embedded project-based learning activities. She has the model classroom where students experience active learning through critical thinking, teamwork, and problem-solving." Congratulations, Dr. Wilcox. Parkside Elementary, Megan Demetriou, fifth-grade teacher since two thousand and six. Her principal, Tom Eichenberg, says of Megan, "Each student feels special in Mrs. Demetriou's classroom. Her sharing approach and interest in each student helps to inspire learning." Congratulations. Post Oak Middle School, Maria Diaz, Spanish Teacher since two thousand and seven. Karen Foster, Ms. Diaz's principal, says of her, "Anytime you see her during the school day, Ms. Diaz is smiling and is encouraging both students and staff. She is keenly focused on her one hundred-plus students, designing lessons to meet their needs and engage them in their own learning." Congratulations, Ms. Diaz. Riverbend High School, Division Teacher of the Year and finalist, and we'll say more about her a little later, Christina Peck, Math Teacher since two thousand and nine. In nominating her, Principal Troy Wright said, "While Ms. Peck clearly possesses a natural gift of teaching, she understands the importance that hard work combined with relationship-building, planning, and professional development are necessary to fully develop her gift and to maximize the positive impact on her students." Congratulations, Ms. Peck. Riverview Elementary, Katie Tullis, fourth-grade teacher since two thousand and six, and also a finalist. According to Diane Holmes, "Passion for students and the desire for learning drives Mrs. Tullis to establish high expectations. She uses teachable moments at opportune times to excite her students about learning." Congratulations. Robert E. Lee Elementary, Ashley Schlund, third-grade teacher since two thousand and twelve. Principal Darrell Land writes that Ms. Schlund leads us during PLC meetings by speaking up for student needs and problem-solves the inevitable challenges that always seem to slow others down. She is a teacher's teacher and a student's best asset. Congratulations. Salem Elementary is not able to join us on this evening, Stephanie Williams, second-grade teacher since two thousand and eight. Harold Morton, her principal, writes, "One of Ms. Williams' greatest strengths is that she leads students to ask their own questions. It's not enough for her students to be able to answer questions, they must also desire to know more." Again, congratulations. Smith Station Elementary, Amanda Armentani, fourth-grade teacher since two thousand and six. Principal Christine Primo states, "It is evident in all that Mrs. Armentani does that students come first." She is grounded in the belief that decisions should always be about what is the best interest of the student. It is this belief that makes her a leader in the school and an asset to Smith Station Elementary. Congratulations. Spotsylvania Career and Technical Center, Steve Tate, Computer Networking Instructor since nineteen ninety-two. According to Lee Browning, Mr. Tate is a teacher who is actively engaged in learning and is personally committed to making his students the best they can be. He is an enthusiastic and energetic teacher who constantly demonstrates to his students a love of computers and technology. Congratulations, Mr. Tate. Spotsylvania High School could not join us on this evening, Bruce Chadwick, Marketing Teacher since two thousand and five. Principal Rusty Davis shared a quote from a student, "Mr. Chadwick has better prepared me for success more than any teacher I have ever had. Each day is a life lesson and an opportunity to grow." Congratulations. Spotsylvania Middle School, Diane Wishard, Special Education Teacher since nineteen eighty-two. In his nomination, Principal Lane Byrd writes that Mrs. Wishard not only impresses me with her own professional growth, but she makes the other teachers in her department better. I attribute much of the success of our Special Education Department, students, and teachers to the leadership of Mrs. Wishard. Congratulations. Botswood Elementary, Rebecca Smith, Kindergarten Teacher since two thousand and twelve. Principal Mike Brown says Ms. Smith has developed her class into a caring family. Her students regulate their own behavior and truly care about each other. This feeling is a direct correlation to the amount of love and inspiration they feel from their teacher. Congratulations, Ms. Smith. Thornburg Middle School, finalist, Megan Schiller, Math Teacher since two thousand and eleven. According to Kirk Tower, Megan Schiller is an example of a talented and caring teacher. Her enthusiasm for the teaching and learning process sets the tone for a positive learning environment. Congratulations. Wilderness Elementary, Noah Hoffman, fourth-grade teacher since two thousand and five. Carol Ann Luter writes, "Making connections is the underlying thread woven by Noah Hoffman. He embraces the learning process and extends his own professional learning to enhance the learning of all Wildcats, students, parents, and teachers." Again, congratulations. If we could just, again, just congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year for two thousand and fifteen. The Office of Human Resources is extremely proud of Spotsylvania County Public Schools Mentor-Mentee Program. We view the Mentor-Mentee Program as essential to the recruitment and retention of the most skilled and effective educators. After careful consideration of content expertise, demeanor, and instructional skillset, our trained mentors are purposefully selected and partnered with our novice teachers. The goal of these partnerships is to enhance teaching and learning through the communication of hope and optimism to offer instructional support and resources each year. Outstanding new teachers and mentor teachers are recognized throughout our division. Nominations are submitted to and reviewed by building administrators who have, then have the opportunity to nominate one Mentor Teacher of the Year and one Teacher of the, New Teacher of the Year. From this pool of candidates, a selection committee reviews packets containing information from the candidate, his and her mentor or mentee, and his or her principal. A level winner is chosen in each category to represent the elementary, middle, and high school. Please join me as we honor our two thousand and fifteen winners. Elementary School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Ms. Jennifer Costa, Lee Hill Elementary. According to Principal Darnella Cunningham, Jen is a passionate educator who is thoughtful and targeted in her daily instruction. As evidenced in her connection with students and families, she works endlessly to build strong relationships with her students as she inspires them to learn. Most importantly, Jen relishes opportunities to grow professionally and to dialogue about her professional practice. Congratulations. Middle School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Mr. Ryan Longfellow, Spotsylvania Middle. Mr. Longfellow's mentee, Ari Elitz, says of him, "Ryan is incredibly perceptive about knowing the balance between collaboration and individuality, and this balance has helped me to grow into an effective teacher. He is passionate about history as well as teaching, and his love of his subject shows through in the way he approaches his classes and professional development." Congratulations, Mr. Longfellow. High School Mentor Teacher of the Year, Ms. Nicole Taylor, Riverbend High. Dr. Troy Wright, Riverbend High School, Principal of Riverbend High School, wrote, "Personality is what makes a great mentor teacher, and Nicole Taylor has it. When we have a new math teacher, we always look to Ms. Taylor as the mentor. As we know, she has the characteristics to help a new teacher adapt quickly. Ms. Taylor does an excellent job in helping our teachers feel like they are a part of the Riverbend community." Congratulations. Elementary New Teacher of the Year, Ms. Katie Mead, Robert E. Lee Elementary. Principal Darrell Land says of Ms. Mead, "She has a calm demeanor, but underneath possesses the spirit of a beast teacher in her work with students." Ms. Mead's students are driven to reaching her high expectations and to do so with laser-like focus on instructional goals and objectives which she communicates to them with clarity and ease. Congratulations, Ms. Mead. Middle School New Teacher of the Year, Ms. Molly Pouts, Thornburg Middle. Mentor Bobby Shields noted Molly's abundance of energy and enthusiasm from day one. She is passionate about her job and her students. Ms. Pouts is always looking out for their best interests. She understands their needs and advocates for them. Congratulations. High School New Teacher of the Year, Ms. Caitlin Fisher, Chancellor High. Principal Jackie Bass Fortune likens Caitlin to the Energizer Bunny and says Ms. Fisher has gained the admiration of many of her students has gained the admiration of many of her students who responds to her teaching style and looks to her to make learning fun and memorable. She has a bubbly personality, positive demeanor, hard work ethic, and strong dedication to her new profession. In the moment we've been waiting for, the Division Teacher of the Year. Many of us have had the privilege and the opportunity to be introduced to this very special young lady, but we want to be able to share her with those of us who were not present at the Sage Banquet. So at this time, we will announce our Division Teacher of the Year for 2015, and I will share with you the bio that was shared with us on that evening. The 2015, you can come on up, Ms. Pep. The 2015 Teacher of the Year believes that every child deserves a chance to feel successful. She designs her lessons to be both engaging and challenging. She pushes students to exceed their expectations in a safe environment where mistakes become learning opportunities. Our Division Teacher of the Year feels that all students come equipped with an inherent thirst for knowledge, and that it is her job to figure out how to nurture and cultivate that desire. She wants her students to strive to be the best, to be the best and to be great. She takes pride in her students' successes and says nothing is better than watching their faces when they fully understand something they never thought they could. Her goal is to make her students believe that they can achieve greatness even when things get hard. The Division Teacher of the Year credits her own mother, a special educator, with showing her the importance of building strong relationships with students. She wants to make a difference in people's lives just like her mom. She knows she must do more than teach her students math, she must motivate them to be lifelong learners. Her principal says that this teacher is dedicated to the art of teaching and to constantly work to improve her own instruction in an effort to help all of her students. Dr. Wright says that she is a leader in her department throughout the school and beyond. She leads multiple professional learning communities, is a member of several professional organizations, and has served as a trainer and presenter at numerous conferences and professional development workshops in the region and at the state level. She is passionate about innovative uses of technology and has pioneered the use of the FLYC classroom to improve student learning. She holds a Bachelor's of Science in Mathematics from the University of Mary Washington and a Master's of Art in Curriculum and Instruction with an emphasis in instructional technology from Virginia Tech. She has been teaching math to students at Riverbend High School since 2009. Again, please join me as we celebrate our Division Teacher of the Year for 2015, Christina
Once again, congratulations to all the Teachers of the Year, but I have been asked that some of the board members have some comments, so don't yet, don't go yet. Mr. Laura.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I always look forward to this day because you represent the very best of our community, the very best of our society. I am convinced, and I have said this a few times before, that the future of America is not going to be determined by, in the battlefields of Afghanistan, Iraq, Yemen, and all that, even though I would not devalue the work that's being done there. But the fact of the matter is that the future of America is in the hands of our teachers. The future of America is going on every day. Livingston, Berkeley, Poso, Ny River, Freedom, Ponax, Spatsy High School, all of you are in the trenches. Unfortunately, we should have the celebration every night. All of you deserve the eternal gratitude of this community, of this country. And as I'm sitting here, watching all of you come forward, I kept thinking, I have a little bit of a military background in me, and George Patton is one of my heroes, and I recall how one time in France during the war, he was inspecting a regiment of Marines, and he went up to the Marine Commandant and he said, "Where do you get these magnificent men?" So I like to turn to the man to my right and say, "Where do you get these magnificent teachers?" May God bless all of you, and thank you for what you do. One final comment, for a number of years, I was an instructor in Georgia at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center, and I was involved in training federal agents from 32 federal agencies. In a writing course that we had, one of the question I would ask, it was a writing exercise, I would ask them, "Aside from your mom and dad, who was the person that influenced you the most?" And I would say that about half of the time, it was teachers, oftentimes down to the elementary school. We're dealing with grown men and women who are already out of college, and many had military experience, and they would go down to the fourth grade and what have you. And that made me feel good because in my life, two of the teachers that influenced the most were Mr. Feyman in the fourth grade at PS 119 in New York and Mr. Price at Central Commercial High School. I still remember those men because without them, I would not be where I am today. And years from now, there will be kids out there, grown men, fathers and mothers, who will be thinking about you, thanking you for your influence. So may God bless you, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you for what you do every
Dr. Meyer.
I think we'll just reverse our board comments with public comments. I'd just like to say a few words very briefly. I think what Mr. Laura said could be very difficult to duplicate, so ditto, ditto, ditto. I would like to say a special thanks for all the teachers for living out your passion for what you love to do, communicating that to the children, which are going to be our future leaders. What we saw this evening were the students from Freedom Middle School in the arts, and we had that represented this evening. We had the young lady, 16-years-old, NASA, you know, future scientist, you know, that she didn't get where she is without the training that's coming from you folks. It just doesn't happen. It comes from examples that you're living with, the passion that you have for the profession of what you like to do and what you like to be. Thank you for giving that to us.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I love this night, we all do. It's a special moment for us to honor you. But I tell the story every year, and so they all get sick of it, because everyone in this room knows the name of my first-grade teacher was Ms. Linda Locke, and she was the one who was my first real game changer. And for a child who had kind of, things weren't so smooth for me at home, that was my safe place, and a lot of you, you're the safe place, and I appreciate you for that. You're more than teaching what's in a book, you're teaching life, love, concern, care, and you also may be the one hug of the day that they need. I still look to her as if she is some sort of God. She meant so much to me, and there were so many others I could name that changed my life, and the ones who looked at me and told me that no matter what, I was a survivor, and I had leadership in me, and I would be okay. And at the time, it seemed hopeless, but it really is people just like every one of you that change lives every single day. You're the profession that teaches all professions. You mean so much, you are so special, and I hope you understand just how special you are and the difference you make every day. Thank you for what you do.
Mr. Braswell.
I also would like to extend to all the teachers that were recognized this evening a special debt of gratitude that I have personally. You guys represent the very best of our community, and you touch the lives of so many of our children. And a couple of that were mentioned as Teachers of the Year had personally touched my own children. So I am so thankful. I can tell anyone with firsthand knowledge that your special touch enriched my children's lives, and I know you've enriched the lives of so many others that are out there in our community. So thank you very much from the well of my heart.
In April, our division received an award really from Advanced Ed Group, which evaluates school divisions all over the country. We're recommended for recognition again, which is an outstanding accomplishment, and we have that because of you folks, and not only you folks, but our entire staff. And we all owe, from our community, a great deal of indebtedness to you, and we all want you to know that you're very much appreciated.
I'd like to echo what everybody else has said, but everyone knows I'm a little biased being a daughter of a Spotsylvania County Schools teacher and the product of the Spotsylvania County Schools. I know already, we have the best teachers out of anywhere, and everybody's striving to catch up with us, and just want to see how proud I am that we have you guys in our system, and I really wish that we could honor you every day and not just one day, so.
And as I mentioned earlier, this night is always very special to me. Being in the ranks of teacher, I'm in awe of all of you, and just all that you do for our students and for your schools, that it's selfless in that what you do. So once again, thank you for all you do, and have a good rest of the year. Thank you. Dr. Baker.
Thank you. Thank you, this will be my report. I wanted to echo many of the things that have been shared tonight, but one of the things that I was recalling, when I first got into leadership, someone had guided me to stay fresh, pay very close attention to who you spend the last five minutes of your day with. And I think as we heard the different testimonies of your greatness, many times from students, many times from your principals and those who work with you every day, it's clear to me that you all represent those folks that represent the best in all of us. And I wanted to use this opportunity, the school board is well aware that over the last couple of years, I formed a teacher advisory team, call it a team versus a council, but to keep the voice of the work ever-present for me and my staff in trying to lead the charge forward. And I would like to take this opportunity to invite you to be a part of that team next year, should you desire to. It's not, you're not forced to. I just give you mean looks if I see you and you don't come. No, but I really would like you to consider being a part of that team. We right now meet every other month, and it's an opportunity to learn about what's happening in your world, but also to gain feedback from your valuable perspective as to how we can continue to improve, how we support teaching and learning, and the many things that we do in our school division. The last thing that I found interesting tonight, sometimes the best folks in our profession and many other professions, but particularly in teaching, are the ones that find the spotlight, like in this particular case, most uncomfortable. And I enjoyed watching that discomfort tonight, and all of you being recognized going, "I really, this is not what I do." And I really, to me, that is because you don't do it for this. Yet, it's wonderful for us to be able to recognize you, because as we recognize you and the great work you do, we're recognizing your peers and we're recognizing the vocation that is transformative. So thank you again, and I know it's a big difference in being recognized late on a Friday night than it is late on a Monday night. So try to get some sleep before tomorrow.
Thank you. I am going to move on to item 5.01, public comments. Dr. Martin.
Good evening. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you clearly keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers signed up at this time, but I defer to you and to open up to the public.
I will open it up, and I'm going to thank all the Teachers of the Year once again as they are exiting. Thank you very much. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak and did not sign up, please raise your hand or stand up so that we can call you forward. I do not see anyone, so we are going to close public comments and move on to Board Member Comments, 5.02. I will start with Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to make my comments extremely brief, because it will save some for comments, says we have a very active agenda later on in the meeting, and so we'll have a lot to discuss there. But I wanted to extend my gratitude to SEDEXO. Several months back, I asked them to consider hiring some of our students that are dealing with intellectual disabilities, and I received a positive report from them that they are engaging those students and giving them an opportunity to work within the school system. And I'm so delighted that they took the initiative on that and given our children an opportunity, or young folks, an opportunity to find gainful employment. I remembered telling them that I had the opportunity to spend some time with, at Lightning Jolt at Chancellor, and I said they put Shoney's to shame. And I know that those young people, if they're given the opportunity, can do great work for us in the school division and our community. And I would just want to thank SEDEXO for taking the initiative to encourage the schools to bring forward those students to have an opportunity for gainful employment. With that, I'll just close my comments at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I don't have a lot this evening. It is our last meeting before graduation ceremonies, so we want to congratulate all the upcoming students that will be making their trip across the stage and congratulating them on their very special day. I also have had a couple of questions about the live streaming, and we're very fortunate to have Ms. Daniels in our community because she has brought live streaming. So if you are not able to attend, or you have a loved one across the country or somewhere that they cannot travel, she shared with me that she will have the links to the live streaming of the graduation posted by May 22nd, so be sure you look for that. So hopefully, everyone gets to see their special graduate that day. Also, I have posted information about tickets. They're usually given out during the rehearsal time, but please check with your individual schools, your principal, or your front office. As these questions are coming in, that would be the best place to get the most accurate information is your local front office. information is your local front office. Award ceremonies are coming up. I do plan on attending several, so please be sure and check your child's calendar for their underclassmen awards, and the senior awards will be coming up. And I think that's all I have this evening. Thank you, Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Ms. Blalock. Mr. Blaine.
I'd like to compliment Mo Petway, who is the past president, I believe, of the NAACP and the great debates that he's organized with his group last week ago, last Saturday at Post Oak. It was really an exciting experience to hear these children of ours, and not only from our division, but other divisions, make a presentation, a big debate about should police officers have body cameras on themselves. And we heard some very strong arguments, pro and con, and one couldn't help but be impressed with their delivery. And I think NAACP deserves a real compliment for performing as well and involving people in our community in a very important activity. And they certainly reflect, I might say, the very teachers that we were honoring this evening with the skills that they learned from them.
Thank you. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As both Mr. Blaine and Mrs. Blalock pointed out, you know, I won't repeat their comments, the turnout for the great debate was very good, and our schools were very well represented. I also want to recognize a teacher that was here this evening, and I think she has already left, Toni Scott, who is retiring. Our teacher chancellor at High School, one of her student, Yessenia de la Cruz, that was recognized in the Northeast Region Art Contest. And I saw Toni, but I think she already left, so catch up with her on June the 4th when they're having our evening and honoring our retirees. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Graham?
I don't have anything else to add. Everybody's pretty much covering absolutely everything there is.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to recognize Mr. Wolf for all the hard work that went into putting together the recognition and award, and all the people that worked with him in doing so. It's great, it's fulfilling. You know, I don't have much hair, but whatever I had, we're standing up. It's good to see these kids. There's a lot of magnificent things going on in our school division, and it's good to see them here in front of the community. The group from Freedom, I had to get up. I couldn't sit down when they were, the men in the choir. Thank you very much. And lastly, I'd like to recognize all the adorable assistant principal and principal that we have here with us. Would you please stand to be recognized, ladies and gentlemen? Only the adorable ones. I'm glad to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And being that it's getting close to the, we're winding down, I think 23 more days of school. Remind you, I am a teacher, so I have the countdown going in my classroom for my students as well. We've, as Ms. Blalock mentioned, this is our last meeting before graduation, so we have that to look forward to. We also have, look, check it with your schools, because now are the time of the end-of-the-year concerts, which are the final exam type of things for our, some of our music programs. So if you have the opportunity to go to any of the schools' final projects, performances, try to get by. You will see some amazing, talented students performing for you. And this is, the performances that I always attend are wonderful. Was able to attend a couple of our end-of-the-year musical and plays. So if you have the opportunity, please try to get to those. And with that, I'm going to close my comments and move on to Dr. Baker. Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, just very briefly, Ms. Shelley. I also want to acknowledge both what the majority of the board saw at the Sage Banquet. That has been a culmination of the work from our human resources staff, and I'd like to congratulate Michelle Colbert and her HR staff on taking such care in making these recognitions possible. I'd also remind the board that over the next few weeks, our schools will be engaged in end-of-year SOL assessments, and it is, again, it's a very intense time of year. I have great confidence in the work that our leaders and our teachers and our collective staff have been doing all year to continue to increase student learning and raise the achievement levels and close achievement gaps, the many things that are integral to our strategic plan. So I ask that we all continue to encourage them during this time and wish them well, and we'll provide all the support that we can as they go through this season, and we're certainly optimistic that they're all going to continue to improve each year, and this year will be no different. So I wanted to report that out, and that's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Laura?
May I have 30 seconds? On Sunday, at Spotsylvania High School, Sunday morning, starting about 6:00 in the morning, it would be the beginning of the Frazier-Mason motorcycle ride. Josh Frazier was a student at Spotsylvania High School. He joined the Marine Corps, and during his second tour, he was killed. Nick Mason was a student at King George, sergeant in the Army, and he was killed in Iraq also. And the Frazier and Mason family have joined force, and in the last 12 years or so, they have raised probably half a million dollars, and all the money that they raised immediately is distributed to veterans groups, and also a scholarship at Spotsylvania High School and a scholarship at King George High School. We started out, I say we because I have been honored to attend every one of these rallies with about 300 riders. This Sunday, we're expecting anywhere between 2,500 and 3,000 riders. They come from everywhere in the region, North Carolina, West Virginia, Maryland. People camp out at the American Legion Post 320 the night before, and at 6:00 in the morning, when we open up, when the boosters at Spotsylvania were there early in the morning to welcome them, many of them are already there at 6:00 in the morning. So if you have time, even if you don't own a motorcycle, come by Spotsylvania High School or get on the road on 208 and wave at these riders that are honoring these two young men who represent the best of our community and gave their life for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura, for sharing. Okay, on to item 6.01, Mental Health Awareness Month. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Across this nation, professionals in the field are working to raise awareness, fight the stigma, provide support, and educate the public. This evening, it's my pleasure to introduce Lisa Dolan, our lead school social worker, who is here to discuss mental health and the impact to our students, families, and schools.
Thank you, and good evening. As Ms. Richardson said, May is National Mental Health Month for the United States, and we are particularly interested in working to raise some awareness about the mental health issues that we are managing, and I want to try to address some things in Spotsylvania County and how mental health is impacting our students. Mental health, really, when you're talking about children, really refers to how they're functioning psychologically on a day-by-day kind of basis. So how they think, how they feel, how they play, how they react and relate to other people, and how they feel about themselves, how they're managing stress, how they're making choices. It's helpful to think about mental health as being along a continuum, varying degrees of wellness and varying degrees of concern, so across kind of a spectrum of mental health concerns, with the degree of wellness or illness varying from time to time. For children and youth, that tends to be much more pronounced than with adults with mental health concerns. So what does good mental health look like for children? What are we hoping to see with children? We're really hoping to see that our children are meeting those developmental milestones, those emotional milestones, in a timely kind of fashion. We're looking to see healthy social skills, how they're coping and managing with concerns, that they have a positive view of themselves, a positive view of their life, of their school, of their family, and that they're functioning well in the home, the school, and the community. So if we know what wellness looks like, what does it look like when we start to see some concerns with our children and youth who have mental health concerns? So it impacts children across all areas of their life domain. We see concerns in the area of play, academic achievement, communications, emotions, behaviors, social skills. There are lots of different psychiatric diagnoses that are associated with mental health concerns of children, but ultimately, really what we need to remember is that those labels are just labels, and they're using those labels to describe these areas of concern and how children are functioning. A child or youth with mental health problems often has those concerns across all areas of their life domain, homeschool and the community. One extremely important aspect of mental health for children is considering how their environment actually impacts their mental health functioning. So there's some statistics that I wanted to share with the board tonight. About 50% of our children and youth in the child welfare system have mental health concerns. About 70% of our children who are in the juvenile justice system have a diagnosable mental health concern. Low-income households are much more impacted by mental health kinds of concerns. Children who witness domestic violence or violence in their community or their home are going to have a longer-term kind of concerns around mental health. And the research really consistently says that the effects of abuse and neglect can transcend into lifelong psychological consequences. In a school system, we're kind of that first early identification for emotional and behavioral problems, also that first early potential of provision of services, and those are very critical to the role that we're going to play in the development and the growth of children. The Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, it's called the ACE Study, links childhood trauma to long-term health and social consequences. In fact, that study really talks about how trauma creates the mental health diagnosis of depression and PTSD. Ultimately, the more categories of trauma that a child is, has impacted them, the more likely they are to have not only long-term psychological concerns, but long-term physical concerns as well. To put a dollar figure on it, the Children's Bureau says that the cost of childhood maltreatment in one year totals $124 billion in the United States. We do know prevention is a pretty effective technique. So what does this mean for our children? All ages, all genders, all ethnic, all racial background. The National Research Council and Institute of Medicine actually calculates that one out of every child in the United States experiences a mental health disorder. Between the years of 2005 and 2011, there was a surveillance about, among children in the United States, and here are some of the findings. The number of children with mental health disorders increases as they get older. The number of children that are diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder is highest between the ages of six and 11. One in 100,000 children ages 10 to 14 die by suicide each year. Millions of children live with a variety of mental health issues. ADHD is the most prevalent diagnosis among children age 3 to 17, and seven in 100,000 youth ages 15 to 19 die by suicide each year. So in addition to these facts, there's some documented differences between the genders. Boys are more likely to have ADHD, behavioral or conduct concerns, autism spectrum, and anxiety. Girls are more likely to have depression and alcohol use disorders. What does this look like in Virginia? According to the Action Alliance for Virginia's Children and Youth, 73% of students with serious emotional disabilities in Virginia do not complete high school. About 64,000 children and youth in Virginia suffer from extreme impairment and emotional disabilities. In 2010, suicide was the second-leading cause of death of children and youth in Virginia. The first-leading cause is accident. In fiscal year 14, Virginia spent over $39 billion on residential care for children. So if we consider that statistic, that one in five children have mental health concerns, in our classrooms, we're probably looking at about six kids out of every 30 that are experiencing some kind of mental health concern at this moment. So for Spotsylvania County, what we're seeing in Spotsylvania County very specifically, qualitatively, we're seeing higher rates of psychiatric hospitalization for our children and adolescents. The complexity of the social-emotional issues is pretty astounding, and pretty, managing that has been, we've found to be very complex. We're seeing an increased level of need at younger ages. Increased awareness of the impact of trauma across the board for our mental health professionals and for our teachers is really beginning to help us understand the daily functioning of our children and families. To give you some specific numbers, Spotsylvania County has 26 students currently being educated in residential psychiatric treatment facilities. 52 in private-public day placement programs that are specific for students with serious emotional disabilities. 139 who are receiving therapeutic day treatment services. In fiscal year 2014, Spotsylvania County spent $1,173,000 for the treatment of children in residential care. 220 students identified with emotional disabilities under IDA. And as of December of 2014, the school social work team had facilitated 74 psychiatric aftercare meetings for students in Spotsylvania County. So that's our students who have been psychiatrically hospitalized and we're facilitating them returning to school. As of March of 2015, the school social work team had been involved with over 1,300 kids. Many groups address mental health in Spotsylvania County Schools. School counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, the administrators are all working to address those needs. I do want to highlight the school social work team as the lead of the school social work team, and just provide you with a little bit of information about who we are and what we're doing. We are trained in mental health concerns, behavioral concerns, positive behavioral support, and consultation to teachers in the classroom. We really take pride in the fact that we consider ourselves the link between the home, the school, and the community, and provide both direct and indirect services. The staff for the school social work team, there are 14 of us that are full-time school social workers. Nine of those 14 are licensed clinical social workers. Two of them are certified as school social workers, and three are actively pursuing clinical licensure. You have a very highly skilled clinical team of school social workers in Spotsylvania County. So what are we doing? How are we responding to this need? As I said, in March of 2015, over 1,300 students, almost half of those kids or those students, we would have considered them as intense cases, meaning that the issues they're dealing with are so complex, they're requiring a lot of support, not just from the school, but from multiple community agencies. And frequently, the school social worker is the hub of that and trying to coordinate those services and supports for students. 38% of the students that we've worked with so far this year are elementary age, and 67% of them are making some progress on the goals we've identified. There's a variety of different things that we're putting into place to try to address these needs. We're continuing to improve those resources. The implementation of the aftercare meetings has been very beneficial for our students. Supporting our TDT program, the school social worker actually helps to oversee that program in each school and maintains that referral process and the utilization review to ensure that effectiveness in the building. Providing direct and indirect services. Participating in professional development at the national level. We had two of our team members who presented at the National School Social Work Conference this year on classroom interventions for students with mental health needs. We are continuing to make assignment changes to try to address the needs in each building, providing crisis interventions, working to develop resiliency through directly addressing some of those adverse childhood experiences, which links our work that we do under McKinney-Vento with our homeless population. And continuing to really work towards professional learning, particularly around the area of being trauma-focused and trauma-informed. In May of 2015, under- In May of two thousand and fifteen, under Ms. Richardson's leadership, we actually have created and started a new multidisciplinary team that I think can be very beneficial and for the community as a whole to try to address some of the needs of the mental health of our students that have mental health needs. So what do we need to do? Recognize the level of concern, and that's a big piece of the education that I wanted to provide for the board tonight. And understanding that those of us that are on the front line of really trying to manage this, and I've been around for a while, been involved in mental health in Spotsika County schools for a while, the complexity is really there. And so we're bailing out those boats. Hopefully, we don't sink. We're making some progress in that, but we really do need that support to stay afloat. Trauma-informed is right now where we're moving towards to develop those particular skills. We recognize that the resources are scarce. They're scarce in all areas. At the same time that we're seeing these needs, our community in general around the area of mental health is losing resources. School's often that first point of contact. We're going to be the first place that we're going to identify these needs. So we can't just react to the needs. We've got to do that piece around prevention. We know that works. Ultimately, that is much more cost-effective, not just financially, but in the lives of our children. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Dolan. Mr. Laura.
There is a- another aspect to your presentation. You are dealing with children from K and you provide services up through the age of twenty. Unfortunately, they don't disappear when they turn twenty. They live to be seventy-five, eighty years old. So what happens during the next sixty years? If you go into the Justice Department website, you know, when Jimmy Carter was president, we actually crossed the line. We had over one million Americans incarcerated. Today, in two thousand and fifteen, we passed the six million. A large number of those folks in the criminal justice system begin to show symptoms of mental health early in life. So if we don't treat them now, we gotta treat them later, and it becomes more difficult. So if there was a- as a cop, I will tell you that the reason for supporting your program is because these kids will all become adults and they'll leave, and if we're not- if we don't intervene now, they're gonna leave here worse than when they came in, and they're going to, you know, cause havoc in their life and in society. It's a lot easier to educate than to incarcerate, and that's the price that we pay in society. Half of these mass killings and misbehavior and whatever are from people who are being treated or should have been treated. So what you're doing is, is critical beyond- beyond the- your immediate area of influence. This is a society problem, and the awareness that you bring about is critical.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Dolan, thank you for sharing with us and enlightening us on the work that you do and the criticality of the work that you do with our students that are in need. I just wanna say thanks for presenting your need through the superintendent for the budget, because one of the things that all of us up here at the DIAS fought for was to make sure that we were funding the fifty-nine positions, some of which exactly are in the area that you need to have, and we recognize you need those. So as you continue to fight for and, one, educate us and help to educate the public as to what you're trying to do, that we can best support you by helping the superintendent and garnering those resources so that we can give you the resources to help you even more. Thank you for enlightening us.
Thank you.
Just a comment. Thank you so much, Ms. Richardson, your team. Ms. Dolan, thank you for, it's not just enlightening us, but putting a spotlight on mental health issues. They're very, very relevant and present in our schools every single day, and I really appreciate you bringing a very timely presentation to spotlight that and to keep it on the front burner. This was on the back burner for a long time, and so I really, really am proud to see Spotsylvania County putting it on the front burner. Thank you so much for your work. Thank you, Ms. Richardson, for your team.
Ma'am, I have a quick comment and a question. I noticed from the slide, there was over a thousand three hundred and forty-some-odd students on your caseload, and doing some quick math, I figured that's about five percent of the student body of Spotsylvania County schools, and that's a substantial amount of students. So my question to you is, what efforts have we made because of a lack of resources to reach out to the county, because there's some duplication of effort to not only receive assistance, but just coordination of effort in caseloads and families so that they're continuously being tracked? And then, you know, I would like to also emphasize something that Mr. Laura said, and is absolutely correct. The job training that we're doing in Spotsylvania County schools with those that are having mental health issues through lightning jolt and a few other things like that are critical so that these young people have something constructive to do, not only in their lives, but something rewarding to do as possibly a career, so that they are not ending up being supervised in the correction system. So I'll let you answer that question.
There's actually a great deal of collaboration that goes along with the- supporting our students and our community around these needs. Someone from the system, myself or Michelle Swisher, sits on the Family Assessment and Planning Team every week, where we have the opportunity to collaborate with the Department of Social Services, the Court Services Unit, the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board, around our students who have the greatest need, so the greatest need in the communities. Those cases are presented and collaborated and teamed in such a way so that we're not all doing the same thing, but all effectively working with the student in our particular areas of expertise. That's consistent across the- across what we're doing. I think the MDT team is kind of a very good way to highlight that, and that what we've done is pulled the model of the Family Assessment and Planning Team out into actually the schools, and so we've got community service providers coming to meet with us to try to talk about some of our most needy students, most significant mental health kinds of needs, to figure out how do we- how do we move forward? When you start talking about some of the significant amounts of trauma that our children experience, it takes all of us to try to figure out how and what and where and keep people safe and help people to grow and to succeed.
I concur with you, and I- and though we may be the first to identify a lot of these situations as the main effort, there's a lot of supporting agencies that can help us. This is clearly a team effort, not a school division effort only. Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. You mentioned a million one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that we spend. Do you have any idea where those funds are coming from, or do you have what? We provide some locally and on state and federal at the same time. Do you have?
That's the Comprehensive Services Act Fund, and I can tell you the breakdown. I'm sure we can get you that information about where those funds come from, but it is the Comprehensive Services Act.
Okay, I just thought maybe you might, I think that would be interested- interesting for our viewing audience to send- see where funds come from and how we do use them. The other question I have, though, is that, I don't know which comes first, the cart or the horse, or whatever we want to say about that, but if you have children who have some of these problems, they certainly have a more difficult times learning and reading, which is my area of interest especially. I just wonder, has there been any studies done about the role of reading and if a child learns to read, he's gonna be able to have some success? If he can't read, he can't, and that's exacerbated, I'm sure, with these children with mental problems. But has any study ever been made in that area of growth and learning and relationships, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of right now. I can certainly do a little bit of research and see what we can find.
If you- if you would, that would be very helpful for me. Thank you very much, and thank you for a very fine presentation.
Quick question. I just have something short. Are many of these of the thirteen hundred students that you mentioned, are they served through IEPs, 504s, just a handful of them?
We're actually about sixty percent regular general education students and forty percent special ed or 504.
Okay, thank you. And Dr. Baker?
Ms. Dolan, I'm gonna ask a leading question. Would it be fair to assume that as we work with other agencies, I think as Mr. Braswell was alluding to, that we work with other agencies, whether it's Social Services, the Sheriff's Department, Child Protective Services, we work with a number of different local agencies? Would it be fair to assume that they are also struggling with both the volume and the complexity of needs within our own community coupled with working with, I guess, just the school aspect of that?
Absolutely. I think if you went and talked to any of my counterparts in any of those agencies or directors above us, that they would all say the same thing, that this locality, the complexity has mushroomed, and we are dealing with some very serious needs in the community.
Well, thank you for bringing the spotlight on to the statistics, which again, whether you've seen these statistics before or not, they're certainly alarming. And I wanna commend the school board in their understanding, wanting to understand what we really mean in today's educational environment about educating the whole child, and that the additional supports that you are gonna consider tonight when approving the budget, we do have some that we'd like more, but we do have some that are dedicated to helping us in meeting the needs of the whole child as those needs increase. So I thank you, Lisa, for this presentation, but also thank you to the school board for continuing to allow our staff to provide you with this information and to being so receptive and considerate of it and wanting to know what you can do to affect change within the school and even within the home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on to item six point zero two, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any reports? No. Dr. Baker, do you have anything?
I had asked, Michelle, if I could go back to when I had, along with the board, had provided accolades to our Teachers of the Year. This time of year, as we just were talking about mental health awareness, over the last week or so, in addition to it being Teacher Appreciation last week, it was also Nurses' Appreciation Day last week, and prior to that, we had Food Service Workers' Recognition. And again, going back to what it requires to effectively meet the needs of our children across the board, from the meals that they receive to the type of care they receive intermittent throughout the day, and as I greeted our nurses last week, they have to provide so many different ranges of medication and supports to our students. I think it coincides well, again, with what was presented tonight. Within our food service workers and all the professionals that work in nutrition, we are so fortunate to have them, and I didn't want to let this meeting go since we will not have another one before the end of the month, to acknowledge the fine work of our nurses and our nutrition and food service workers as well.
Thank you. Okay, on to item seven point zero one and two, Consent Agenda Items. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening of the minutes of the April twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting and the follow-up budget work session, and donations which are usual and customary, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will make that motion.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Blaine, a second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor of the consent agenda item as presented, aye?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Seven, zero. Okay, on to item eight point zero one, Adoption of Our Budget. Well, I first want to say thank you to Dr. Baker and all of his staff for working and giving us, helping us to come up with a budget that was not everything we had originally expected, but to help us to make it work, that's something that we can work with. So the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget development process, the school board conducted two public budget hearings and received input from stakeholders. In addition, the division conducted several work sessions to review information from the Budget Advisory Committee and staff reports. Based on the most recent school board budget work session on April twenty-fourth, staff prepared the attached reports for our two thousand and sixteen fiscal year budget for consideration and approval. The budget highlights include: to provide a three percent COLA for eligible employees, to restore and add fifty-nine positions, restore stipends by five percent, reduce the athletic fee from one hundred dollars to seventy-five dollars per sport, per student, the creation of middle school debate sponsor stipend, creation of James Farmer Coordinator stipend, the creation of the one hundred five per facilitator online blended facilitator rate, adjust the high school volleyball assistant coach stipend, adjust the elementary school and middle school special education stair stipend, increase degree subpay from seventy dollars a day to eighty dollars a day, increase long-term non-certified subrate from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty dollars today a day, increase long-term certified teacher subrate from one sixty-five to one seventy dollars per day, increase non-degree subrate from sixty dollars per day to sixty-five, increase substitute rate from fifty-five dollars to sixty dollars per day, increase interpreter levels one and two from fifteen dollars per hour to twenty dollars per hour, increase hourly paraeducator rate from twelve fifty per hour to thirteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, increase our bus aid hourly pay from eight seventeen to nine dollars and fifty cents per hour, increase transportation hotline hourly rate from ten dollars per hour to contracted hourly rates, adjust the VRS rate for professional group from fourteen point five percent to fourteen point oh seven percent, establish the Affordable Care Act Health Insurance Assessment Fee Account, lower health insurance expense paid for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget, early retirement incentive program, EREP projected savings. Overall, the school board's goal in developing its budget continues to maintain the overall strength of Spotsylvania County Public Schools as a leading school division. May I have a motion to adopt the two thousand and sixteen budget?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the budget as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Ms. Blaylock and a second by Dr. Meyer. Do we have some comments first?
Just a huge thank you to Dr. Baker, his staff, Ms. Gaines, your staff, everyone in the community who supported the division throughout the budget process this season. But mainly, I want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff for putting children first.
Mr. Braswell.
I as well like to thank Dr. Baker and his staff, especially Ms. Gaines. I can see her dimples, so it was a good job by her, and I appreciate all the input and hard work that she put into this and her staff. It's- this, she makes it look easy, and it's not, and I just want to thank you for everything you do in regards to preparing us to go through a budget process like this. So thank you. And I'd also like to highlight my- And I also like to highlight my thanks to the board for a variety of different initiatives that we put into place in this budget this year. One being the increased coaching stipends, very excited about that. Next year, I'm looking forward to restoring coaches fully from all the cuts that they endured during the Great Recession. I'm really excited about the sunsetting of the activity fees. For the first time, we've taken a big step in that direction. And I think if we deal with that incrementally, but also aggressively, to eventually have it as though that's not a burden to parents as they prepare their children to participate in after-school activities, I'm very excited that we've taken the first step in the budget on that. But most importantly, I'm excited that the budget not only lines up with our strategic plan, but it encourages and inspires a sense of sustainability in the budget and sustainability in teacher pay. We need to reward our best and our brightest. We had a whole room full of them sitting here in front of us, and they clearly deserve the pay that they're going to receive and then, and then some. So I'm excited that we can offer the three percent pay raise, but I'm also excited that we are projecting in future years to be able to give them sustained increases in pay. So with that being said, I close my comments. And I'm very excited about what this budget does as a first step in terms of taking care of our division employees.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, I would just like to highlight, thanks for reading everything that the budget includes, but I think we all recognize what we had to take or not do of nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. The only beauty of the nine hundred and ten that we had to take out of the budget is that we'll be given an opportunity, hopefully before the end of the calendar year, to take a look at how we can not delete those instructional items that we need, but how we can restore with the use of carryover funds or other sources so that those truly instructional needs can be fulfilled. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Laura?
I'll vote, I'm gonna vote in support of this budget because back in September, when we started on this journey, I made a plan that I would support a budget that had a cost of living for our employees. So that has been met. But I want everyone to know that I'm voting for this budget with a heavy heart. And to me, these are the best of times and the worst of times. And someone will say, well, what do you care, you're leaving. I'm leaving, but I'm not dying, and Spotsylvania will always be my home. And I worry about what I see, and perhaps I'm in a position where I can speak more freely because I am not facing any election. But I think I represent the view of a number of people in our community. When I say that the trend is not good, and we all see in the charts, it's going from sixty-one percent to forty-eight percent. And, yeah, the staff did it, but they had no choice to do it. And the costs, the cuts that were made are difficult cuts. And we're shortchanging our children. No matter how you color it, how you spin it, the fact of the matter is that we, as a society, we, as a community, are not supporting our children to the tune that we should. You saw all the magnificent teachers. How long can we expect them to continue working and keeping up with their sense of humor and working hard? Everyone from the superintendent, his staff, all these adorable principals that are working like the Bank of Maryland, daytime, nighttime, and Saturday too. I could go on and on to mention everyone in our school division that's working beyond. And yet, what do we do as a community? I think that is something for those of you that are gonna remain in Spotsylvania, to think, be thinking about that. I know times are difficult, but not every community treats their teachers like we do here in Spotsylvania. Food for thought, my friends, as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Ms. Grant?
I just want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff and Ms. Gaines and her staff, again, on the budget process. I think that, as I said in the last work session, we were able to accomplish a lot this year in the budget, as we listed at the beginning, and still do it on an ideal budget constraint is a big success. And I think we should be happy with everything that we were able to accomplish in that time period this year, because we know next year, things might get a little tougher with the goals that we have set, so we're going to have to work hard to get that done. So now that we are gonna approve this, we gotta start over again and work hard to get that accomplished.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine?
The cost of a child's education is always paid, without exception. And it's paid by those of us who pay the bill. We pay, or it's paid by the child who's failed to receive certain educational advantages. And the Board of Supervisors, there's set a requirement of providing the school division the same amount of money for two thousand sixteen as we had for two thousand fifteen. We call that level funding. Our initial budget called for a nine-point million, five million dollar difference in the educational needs of our children in that level funding request. Mrs. Gaines and her finance department team were able to obtain a return of school money on the county's books, reworked debt service costs, many other adjustments. I want to thank that whole team for their extra effort reaching a final budget with a submission gap of one point three million between our immediate needs and level funding. The final gap remaining after the counties had reworked our budget was, as Dr. Meyer had just mentioned, nine hundred and ten thousand dollars, which we've absorbed at this time and with hope that we'll have money a little bit later. He worked, Dr. Meyer, mentioned in our work session that we were able to make lemon, to make a lemon into lemonade. And that truly is an accomplishment, and you've heard the plaudits being attributed to that budget. And I concur with those budgets, those comments. However, the feedback I receive from the public is that education of our children, based on our prudent budgeting, remains their number-one requirement, ahead of all other priorities. I was disappointed, frankly, when the Board of Supervisors refused to fund our budget request. We were provided a lemon from which we had to make lemonade. Our twenty-four thousand student division was rewarded with seventeen thousand four hundred and eight dollars more than we received last year. I know the public wants to do us more. I've had too many parents talk to me about saying, hey, I'm willing to pay more and would like to see more go into education. And for that reason, I'm gonna vote no on this budget when it does come to a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Once again, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Baker, Ms. Gaines, and all that were, all, everyone was a part of this budget. And also, just a little, this is, you all have a, an envelope, a folder that has the budget documents in it, and then we will be receiving the budget book sometime in July. Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Okay, we're, I'm gonna call for a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Laura.
Laura, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaine, no.
Grant, aye. Okay, we have adopted the budget with a six, one vote, the nay for Mr. Blaine. Thank you. On to item eight point zero two, Approval of Fiscal Year Two Thousand Sixteen Budget Amendment Number One. Mrs. Gaines?
Good evening, Ms. Shelley, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. As you can see, we're off the ground running already. FY sixteen, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight Budget Amendment Number One. As you are aware, the school board completed its work on April twenty-fourth. Also, the Board of Supervisors completed its work on April fourteenth. Based on the works that were completed, there is now a need to request a budget transfer. Keep in mind, when they did approve their budget on April fourteenth, it was not fully funded, so therefore, in order to resolve the gap, the total nine-ten was deducted from instruction. Then when you all came together, staff did present a plan, and based on that, you see the result of the categorical transfer. So at this time, staff is requesting that the school board approve Budget Amendment Number One for FY sixteen as presented, and the request will go to the Board of Supervisors to appropriate the funds at their June meeting.
I move to approve Budget Amendment Number One.
Ms. Grant, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, this will begin the dance that we'll have between now and next year, the transfers of funds from one category to the other. And I was, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but I will submit to you that administration, transportation, maintenance, and technology all have an input in what happens in the classroom. Just like every Marine, every Marine is a riflman, but the fact of the matter is not every Marine goes on the front line. For every Marine in the front line, there's always about twenty people in support. For every teacher in the classroom, there are buses, people cleaning the schools, maintaining the air conditioning, the administrators that are working long hours, and the technology that the kids need in order to keep up with the world so that all of these areas, although they're not instruction, I would argue they're just as important as instruction, because they support instruction. And without them, instruction can survive, can flourish. But what choice do we have? So yes, you can count on my vote, but it hurts. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of Budget Amendment Number One, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, seven, zero. On to Budget Amendment Number Two, Bridges, Grant?
In looking at Budget Amendment Number Two, we do receive a grant for about a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Keep in mind, this is grant funds. The monies are used for several factors: salaries and benefits of a project manager, teachers, and support staff that are hourly. So at this time, staff is recommending that you approve Budget Amendment Number Two, which was already previously approved by the supervisors.
May I have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number Two?
So moved.
Mr. Blaine? Second by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? Okay, may I call for the vote, Budget Amendment Number Two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, seven, zero. On to item eight point zero four, Approval of Resolution Requesting That the Board of Supervisors Issue General Obligation Bonds For the Use of Schools.
In looking at the budget that was just adopted, it does include CIP funds of eighteen point six million. As you are aware, three point seven million is being returned to the school division. These were bond proceeds that were previously allocated for the Massaponic Church Road Project. The resolution that is attached, you are requesting that the Board of Supervisors officially issue bonds for our FY sixteen capital projects in the tune of fourteen point nine million.
May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the general obligation bonds?
I move to approve the resolution, I'm sorry. Approve the resolution requesting the fourteen point nine million dollars in general obligation bonds.
That's second, I think Dr. Meyer got the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, seven, seven, zero. On to item eight point zero five, First Reading of Policy Updates. Okay. Staff received policy updates from Virginia School Boards Association, the V S B A, in February two thousand fifteen. These updates have been reviewed by staff and are presented this evening. On the February two thousand fifteen V S B A Policy Update Checklist and Index Manual, both of which are attached and which we have received prior to look over and voice any corrections that we needed. May I have a motion to approve the twenty, the February two thousand fifteen updates?
I will move the recommended action.
Okay. Mr. Blaine, and a second? By Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the first reading approval for the two thousand fifteen policy update? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, seven, zero. Thank you. Okay, on to item eight point oh six, Approval of Revisions to I G D A A R one and R two. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to bills introduced by both the Senate and the House, the Code of Virginia was amended to direct the Virginia Board of Education to develop guidelines for policies dealing with concussions in student athletes, requiring each school division to develop policies and procedures regarding the identification and handling of suspected concussions in those student athletes. Part of these guidelines state that in order to participate in any extracurricular athletic activity, each student athlete and the student athlete's parent or guardian shall review on an annual basis information about concussions provided by the school division. After having reviewed materials describing the short and long-term health and academic effects of concussions, each student athlete and the student athlete's parent or guardian shall sign a statement acknowledging receipt, review, and understanding of such information. The regulations brought before you this evening incorporate these requirements for students wanting to participate in athletics at both middle and high school level. It is the administration's recommendation that the school board approves the changes to regulations as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the revisions to I G D A A R one and R two?
I move to approve the revisions.
Ms. Grant, and a second by Mrs. Blaylock. Do we have any discussion, comments? Mr. Braswell?
The prior timeframe for review, was it every two years prior to that?
This is a new, the guidelines that have been set out by the Virginia Department of Education. The, the regulations that have been established at this point incorporate the requirement to have the concussion acknowledgement form turned in roughly around the same time as the physical form. So the physicals begin, new physicals begin May first. We felt that it was appropriate to add this requirement as most students who are involved in athletics are beginning to get those physicals and those rolling in. So we felt that doing those two processes of filling out the physical form as well as the concussion acknowledgement protocol, that it would, in essence, kill two birds with one stone, being able to take care of that.
But prior to that, weren't the students required once every two years?
I think it was on an annual basis.
It was on an annual basis?
Yes.
Was it testing once every two years?
There is, the, the high school does what they call impact testing.
Impact testing, right.
Yes, they do pre and post, but that's only at the high school level.
Yeah, but that's done once every two years. This has no impact on this.
No, that has no impact on this. That's, that's separate testing, that's diagnostic for kids who actually try out. This is foundational information for the student and the parent to see, pardon me, for the students and the parents to see the information as presented in regards to concussion awareness.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, all those in favor of the, the I G D A A R one and two, aye, please?
Aye.
All those opposed, seven, zero. Thank you. Okay, on to eight point zero seven, Approval of Resolution, Virginia Public School Authority.
Good evening, Madam-
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Each year, the Virginia Public School Authority, or V P S A, conducts the sale of technology equipment notes. The proceeds from these notes provide the next installment of funds in the Educational Technology Grant Program, which provides support for school divisions to develop and implement the Standards of Learning Web-Based Technology Initiative. School divisions are required to use the funds first to develop and maintain the capability to support the administration of online S O L testing, which Dr. Baker mentioned began yesterday, with, for all students, with the exception of students who do qualify for paper tests. Funding for this program was approved by the adoption of the 2014 through 2016 biennial budget by the General Assembly, and its administration's recommendation that the school board approves the V P S A resolution as presented.
May I have a motion to approve the?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, second. Ms. Blaylock. Any questions or comments?
I do have one quick one. So we're causing, it's a cost, but yet we will, it will be recouped by the state. But yet, it is a cost of $830,000 that the state is giving us to have S O L tests.
The cost is actually in the technology first, and it is completely reimbursed. So it's up to the $830,000 that we do receive back, and it's for the actual tools first.
It's for the technology tools?
Yes.
I'm just trying to make a point that the state is giving us this money that we will be using for the tools for S O L testing, yet if there was, if there was not this requirement to do the S O L testing, that $830,000 that is coming from the state could go into other instructional parts of the budgets throughout the state of Virginia.
That is my understanding, however, they are pretty, and I do have pizza carry in case it gets too convoluted for me. But my understanding is that it is required to be used for the technology devices first, is the language that is used. The key word is first.
The technology devices that are required for the S O L testing.
I would say, Ms. Shelley, that it's one of the few funded mandates that we have at the moment. But I also think that what you're getting at is that this is a state investment in technology for the primary purposes of testing.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, may I have those in favor of the approval of the V S B, V S B, V P S A technology reimbursement? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No, seven zero. Thank you. On to approval of the purchase of DreamBox, sole source purchase. Ms. Flannard?
Thank you. DreamBox is an adaptive software program that individually tailors every math lesson and ensures that students work in their optimal learning zones. It builds on students' conceptual understanding, fluency, reasoning, and problem-solving skills. DreamBox provides teachers with detailed reports aligned with the standards of learning. It supports the implementation of guided math, which allows the teacher to provide targeted, small-group-specific intervention for students. It allows children to access and process mathematical content in both English and Spanish. Students have access to the program 24/7, allowing for continuous learning opportunities both in and out of school. It is important to note that this would be entirely grant-funded through the Title I Grant, and therefore, this Title I schools would be accessing DreamBox. It is administration's recommendation that the school approves this and future sole source purchases of DreamBox to support intervention efforts.
May I have a motion? Mrs. Blaylock?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion? Mr. Braswell?
My question is, is for this, for the DreamBox software, what age brackets, what grade levels are we targeting? And how many have access? How many would be able to have access to it?
That's a great question, Mr. Braswell. This is for the elementary schools that are considered to be Title I. Therefore, there are nine Title I elementary schools, and it would be targeted for our students that are considered to receive Title I services. However, you do have five schools that are considered school-wide. Therefore, all of the students in that school would be able to access that program.
Okay, so that all the students would be able to engage that from the Title I schools?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I looked at it, and wow, it's something that I wish everybody could be able to use, the way that it places the students. Is this a one-year license and renew it every year?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. May I have, we're going to take a vote on DreamBox. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, seven zero. On to 8.09, Maintenance Capital Project for Robert E. Lee Elementary School. Ms. Finley and Mr. Hockaday.
Good evening, Ms. Shelley, members of the board. Dr. Baker and Dr. Meyer, thank you again for allowing me to present with you this evening. Along with me this evening is Sean Hockaday, Director of Maintenance. The approved FY15 Maintenance Capital Improvement Plan provides funding for the replacement of the roof system for Robert E. Lee Elementary School. The project consists of the total removal of the existing adhered EPDM roof, original built-up roofing, existing installation, and new work, including installation of two layers of installation and a new 60-mill fully-adhered EPDM roofing membrane over the existing deck. The project square footage is approximately 18,455 square feet. The project was advertised in Eva, Virginia statewide e-procurement website, on the division's purchasing website. Bids were received on May 5, 2015, and were as follows. Peach State Roofing, 1,800, I'm sorry, $187,050. Dunn Roofing Sheet Metal was 224,386. Haley Builders was 228,000. Reliance Roofing was 249,670. The administration's recommendation is that the school board accept the low bid of 1,800, I'm sorry, 187,50 submitted by Peach State Roofing to perform the work referenced in the above project. All of the firm's bid documents were submitted in accordance with the instruction to bidders, or IFB, and their qualifications meet or exceed the requirements set forth for this project. Once again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to present this item, and Mr. Hockaday and I would be more than happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? No, Mr. Laura, and a second by Ms. Blaylock. And Ms. Blaylock has a question.
Thank you. Mr. Hockaday, is this, I'm assuming we're going to do this over the summer?
Yes, ma'am.
Entire roof, I was thinking.
Yes, ma'am.
It will not affect, just to put that out there.
They, just to clarify, they do actually have summer school in the front part of the building.
Okay.
All the work being done is in the rear, the addition, what we call the addition, which is now 25 years old, but it's on the back part of the school, so there will be nobody occupying the space that we're working in.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Nice job.
Mr. Hockaday, I was going to start out by saying, in your spare time, then I realize you don't have spare time, but RE Lee, it's a school that I treasure because it's my neighborhood, and, but it's one of the oldest schools in the county, it's one of the oldest schools in the region, and it's in a prime location. And I know that what I'm suggesting is not germane to this motion, but at one point years ago, there was talk about selling that property and then building a new, modern elementary school to the tune of, you know, like Rock Road Elementary or Wilderness Elementary. We're spending an awful lot of money maintaining an old building, and yet that location is prime for developer, the Baker's Company, or even the county for office buildings and what have you. So in your spare time, would you look into that, see if there's any move in those areas? Is there anyone interested in purchasing that property from the school division? Because it might be worthwhile to listen to some offers, because there's some benefit to be derived from it.
The superintendent may be privy to offers that I'm not aware of, but as I know of right now, there aren't any. But I think that's something, as we move forward, we're always looking to see when we grow, how we grow, and where we grow in, so we'll continue to look at it.
Any more questions or comments? Okay. Go ahead, sorry.
I can't believe the addition's 25 years old. I'm getting old, but, so when was the last time we updated the non-addition part? And is that in the future needed, or will this take care of it for a while?
The two roofs are done at separate times, so we, it's, the front part of the school has a fairly new roof on it, it's about seven years old.
Okay.
So this will put both of them under warranty. The ideal condition is with EPDM roofs, you keep them under warranty, which they come with a 25-years manufacturer warranty. Beyond that point, you don't have anything to fall back on. So once we get to that time period, it's time to replace them.
Okay, may I have the vote for the capital project, the roof for Robert E. Lee Elementary School? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven zero. Okay. 810, approval of division's group health, prescription, dental, and vision insurance. Ms. Colbert and Ms. Finley.
Once again, I will be presenting this evening for you. Along with me is Ms. Michelle Colbert, she is our Executive Director of Human Resources. Multiple joint RFPs were issued by the Spotsylvania County Government to include Spotsylvania County Public Schools for group health, prescription, dental, and vision benefits. The County Procurement Division issued the joint RFP beginning on October 1, 2014. RFP Evaluation Committee was comprised of seven members, including both county and school staff. The Evaluation Committee reviewed, scored multiple vendor proposals, and held interviews with the top-ranking firms from each solicitation. After interviews and final negotiations, Anthem was selected as the most qualified insurance firm for health, prescription, dental, and vision employee coverage based on the evaluation factors listed below. Ability to provide current high-quality services, which means extent to which the proposed solution satisfies the RFP requirements, clearly demonstrated understanding of the work to be performed, quality of administration and services, which include customer service and support, enrollment processes, reporting capabilities, general accounting administrations, claims processing, and claims processing to include accuracy, timeliness, sorry, timeliness, systems, and to include service performance guarantees, communication materials, techno, tech, I cannot speak this evening, excuse me. Technological capabilities, employer-member services, document certification of coverage samples. The second one was experience and qualifications. That means financial stability of firm, prior success, successful experience completing a project of similar magnitude, references, proposed staff, which include technical experience and professional competence, and team organization and amount of experience as a team. The third criteria was implementation of service and ease of transition. Project approach, implementation timeline, distributing offer's ability to complete, implementation tasks to ensure plans are fully operational by October 1, 2015. Project management, project team, current workload and ability to perform hard work within the schedule, training. And final, the final evaluation criteria was cost, and that includes cost and cost guarantees, along with financial funding arrangements. And we also had interviews. Administration's recommendation is that the board will, my goodness, the RFP Evaluation Committee is recommending multiple contracts be awarded to Anthem for a period of one year with four annual renewal options. If the board approves the recommendation, the new contracts would be effective as of October 1, 2015, with the county and schools entering into separate contracts. The estimated costs are 26 million. This also varies depending on the amount of claims incurred and paid. Thank you again for allowing me to present to you, and Ms. Colbert and myself will be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, happy to recommend.
Okay. Dr. Meyer, and a second. Ms. Grant? Any questions? Comments? Mr. Braswell?
I just have a really quick comment. The evaluative criteria that you used to make your recommendation was spot-on, and I am convinced, as well, based off of our past experience and our history with Anthem, that we should be able to get the best value for our dollar.
We have our wonderful evaluation team to thank for that criteria. It was their job to come up with it, and they did a wonderful job doing it.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the group health, prescription, dental, and vision plan?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Informational items, all usual and customary? Okay, thank you. On to 10.01, unfinished business. Any unfinished business? I just want to remind everyone that on June 8, we will have a work session, workshop prior to our meeting, so it will begin at 4:30. And any new business? Four? Four o'clock, I'm sorry, thank you for the correction, four o'clock. Thank you. June 8, it's the Monday right after graduation is the day of our next board meeting. And on to 10.02, any new business? Okay. On to 11.01. Be it resolved that the board conducts a closed meeting on May 11, 2015 for the following purpose: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session? Was that Dr. Meyer? Dr. Meyer, and a second?
Second.
By Ms. Blaylock? And all those approve?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are in closed session.